Ladies and gentlemen, I will call the November 12th meeting Planning Commission to order. If you will join me in the state of the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to God, not the United States of America, and to your Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just wanted to make aware of upcoming meetings and activities. On Monday, the 17th, Town Council has committee meetings. On Tuesday, I should talk to the microphone. On Tuesday at 6:30, Board of Historic and Architecture Review has a meeting. The Border Zoning Appeals Meeting that same night has been canceled. On Tuesday, December 2nd, at 6:30, we have a Town Council meeting. And we'll see you here again on Tuesday, December 9th, for Planning Commission meeting. Next up is public comments. Do we have anyone signed up for public comments? Okay. Moving right along, do we have any Planning Commission comments tonight? Okay. Item number four, Entrance Corridor Overlay Review, 803 South Church Street. Ellen Osmondson is the applicant. Ms. Clary, do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking Entrance Corridor Overlay Review and approval to reface two painted and stained wood signs. The first sign is 120 by 60 inches, approximately 14 square feet, and backlit illuminated. The ground-mounted floodlight will face up towards the sign. A Planning Commission waiver is required as the detached sign is nonconforming because it is not at least 10 feet from the right-of-way. The second sign will be 38 inches by 42 inches, storefront-mounted sign. They will be illuminated from existing overhead light. They will both feature black, white, tan, and dark green colors. Town does support this application from a zoning standpoint with the condition that the applicant completes the sign permit application and fee payment. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone here from the applicant who would like to speak? Step right up, so state your name and address, step to the podium, please, and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Ben Osmondson, 15-400 Melquie Trail. Just here to answer any questions that we have, just kind of basically also get a face before you guys because we are going to start to do some renovations of the exterior, which will require Planning Commission review and approval. And just want to know that we're here to kind of be a good part of the committee and we'd like kind of a fresh start. I know that that location and the board have not gotten along great in the past. Not to say that anybody on either side, I just want to kind of have a fresh start of, you know, we're here to work with you guys and to do it, play by the rules, and answer any questions and try to work with you in a way that endears us to the community and the commission and not the other way around, so.
Great, thank you. I have a question, the sign that's currently up, the roadside sign, that's temporary, correct? The renderings show a bit more elaborate sign.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I have a question, did you get authorization to put that sign up now?
No, ma'am, and I, Ms. Clary let me know that maybe my information that I had gotten was a little bit flawed in that since it's temporary and in the existing location of where the original sign was, that we were okay to put it up without having to get permission, which I apologize, I did not get because I was.
Given some wrong information, I think, maybe.
Yes.
All right. And I don't know, is there a penalty for putting up a temporary sign when, especially when you were told that you shouldn't?
Not at this time, we don't have any sort of penalties.
Okay, all right.
Other questions for the applicant?
So, is it?
Go ahead.
Sir, turn over.
My question was, this is just replacing a sign that's already there, correct? The one next to the road?
Yes.
They'll be replacing both of them, the one on the facade and the one at the road.
Yes, but this one, I was concerned about this one because of near the right-of-way with an 10-foot buffer and, well, pretty much it's just pretty much grandfathered in, no compliance. You just updated the sign.
Yes, sir.
No location change or anything.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Bevan?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
Thank you.
And with it being in this location and whenever in the future that the right-of-way goes through, will they need to move the sign at that point? I know that's thinking way ahead.
It would just have to be determined once we get that far in the planning process of the bike trail.
But that's a ways off.
Yes.
That's a ways off, okay. We don't know where.
Any other questions for the applicant? Chair, will you attain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve as presented with the conditions set forth by the town recommending completing a sign permit application and fee payment.
To clarify, this is approval of ECO and the Planning Commission waiver.
Okay.
Give me a second.
Any further discussion? Call for the question, please. Dr. Bevan?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
Thank you. Wish you great success.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming to town.
I appreciate it.
All right, next item is also an Entrance Corridor Overlay Review, 1018 South Church Street, Major League Builders. Jimmy Ferguson is the applicant, do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking ECO review and approval to install a 21-foot by 6-foot roofline extension and concrete slab. Colors and materials will match what is on the existing structure. Again, town staff, this, town staff support this application from a zoning standpoint with the condition that the applicant completes the zoning permit application and fee payment. Thank you.
Okay. So, anyone here to speak on behalf of the application? Okay. Any Planning Commission discussion, what's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen?
So, why, since I'm new to this, tell me, why does this come before? Because it's a change to an exterior, is that why it comes before Planning Commission?
That is correct. Anything that's located within the Entrance Corridor Overlay, any addition, material change, color change, comes before the Planning Commission for review and approval.
But it's not encroaching on anything, we're not having setback problems?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? What's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented with the town recommendations for the zoning permit application and fee payment.
Give me a second.
In motion, in a second, any further discussion?
I'm sorry, one quick question on the picture. Is the gravel between the house and, is the house facing South Church, or is it?
It's in the rear, it's in the rear for the main building. There's a building in front of this one, sharing that same gravel parking lot.
Okay.
This is where we just approved a month or so ago, the back porch extension.
Right.
I got you, okay, I remember that now.
Okay, any further discussion? Call for the question, please. Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Dr. Bevan?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Item number six, another Entrance Corridor Overlay Review, 18403 Cypress Crossing. Michael Bryant is the applicant, we have a staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. The applicant's seeking Entrance Corridor Overlay Review and approval. This is for the Comprehensive Roadside Management Program. The application includes clearing of existing vegetation within the VDOT right-of-way along Ben's Church Boulevard and Cypress Crossing. They will be planting 14 small understory trees. They will also be installing a three-wail white vinyl fence to match the existing fence in the area. This application has been submitted for site instance reasons for the overall project proposed out there. It will require a resolution from Town Council in support of the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone here to speak on behalf of the application? There you are, all right. State your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Neil Beasley, I'm a landscape architect with Timmins Group out of Richmond, Virginia, we are representing our client.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything you'd like to say on behalf of the application?
No, other than we have already started our due diligence with VDOT, they have been on-site and they are actually supportive of the work as well. We're actually helping them do what they should be doing.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Are you doing this on behalf of the car wash previous stuff that was approved over there, or?
Yes, Hutton is our client for that project and that is the applicant for this part.
That had the previous approval or to go ahead and do the car wash and the expansion on the other, when the four-way intersection gets done, is that right? This is all in preparation for that?
That is correct.
In association with it, yes.
Well, you asked the same question I had.
Any other questions?
Chairwoman Hilligas, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Tell the applicant, I had the same question that Dr. Pope just asked. Seems like pretty generous undertaking here. I'm trying to understand the motive because this is beyond where the car wash is proposed.
That's.
What, what?
That's correct. So, as I stated earlier, we have done our due diligence with the VDOT, we have met on-site with them and they are asking us to actually do this removal in light of some visibility concerns that they have. It's a limited access road and they are very concerned about if and the effect that someone does drive down the wrong way, that there's not enough of a sight line and that's why they've asked us to do these removals.
So, the next question, the acreage behind this, this is owned by someone else other than the people that own, that has the mild wash, is that correct?
It's in the process of being purchased by the same company.
Okay. So, there's going to be something additional, probably commercial, coming somewhere in the future?
Yes.
Yeah, hi, my name is Gus Newman, Timmins Group, also representing their client. I'm the civilian, civilian area. So, Mr. Bryan, to answer your questions, the frontage along the road that extends up away from where the car wash will be is also next to the acreage, 14 acres, plus or minus, that are planned to be commercial development.
Wow, that's, that's, that's what I was curious about, commercial or residential? I was curious about that. And this has nothing to do, I mean, with the application, with the mild wash, there is some landscaping requirements to hide the roll-up doors from Route 10.
Yes, that was previously approved.
And this will have no impact upon that previously approved.
Correct.
Landscaping. Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Will all the vegetation in your crosshatch area be completely down and then plant the creek myrtles back, i.e., will there just be a grass field there that continues to get mowed? I mean, obviously, in this little field, there's all kind of random trees and shrubs and everything. My question is, is all that gone and then you're just going to see a open area? Or are we leaving scrub trees, or are you clear-cutting it?
The intent is clear-cut everything within the right-of-way except for one large, very magnificent sycamore tree.
Okay.
And so, that will be left, the rest will be removed. And then, in light of that, we did actually walk that corridor and assess to see if there was anything we should preserve, and there really wasn't any kind of a quality tree in there, so we, that's why we decided to replant with the additional tree, the 14 additional trees, to compensate for the complete removal of everything you see there.
Other questions? What's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen?
Is this a recommendation or approval?
This is ECO approval.
Then I'll make the, the recommendation or approval that we approve as presented based on the site plan presented.
So, a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for the question, please. Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Dr. Bevan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number seven, another Entrance Corridor Overlay Review, 1119 South Church Street. Aaron Williams is the applicant, do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is seeking ECO review and approval for a 12-foot by 12-foot, 6-foot-high vinyl fence in a tan color with a double 6-foot swinging gate. The fence will provide an enclosure for the generator. From a zoning standpoint, we do support this application provided a zoning permit and fee payment are completed. Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the application? Nope. Okay. Any Planning Commission discussion?
I understand why they need to do it, it's, you know, generators do get, get stolen. My only thought was, the white is so white against that building, but, you know, they could do a tan or a brown, but as far as putting a fence up, I'm fine with that.
I think it's tan there, probably.
Is it tan? Okay.
I'm sure they've taken into safety consideration, but a 60-foot high fence is a pretty high fence on the back of their building next to two windows. I mean, I think a 4-foot fence would hide the generator, but I don't care if they put a 4-foot or 6-foot, but I hope they thought about their own safety concerns back there at the bank.
Ms. Smith, there's a picture of the color of the fence on the page 19 of the right-hand corner.
Well, perhaps, you're right. All I could see was, or all I looked at was the drawing next to the building, and it just looked like it was white, but going to be white. Yeah. I'm with you, though, that 6 feet, nobody's going to be able to lift a generator over 4 feet. They can sure pull it down, they can pull down a 6-foot too, but.
I would hope if somebody were going to steal the generator, they would just not mind ramming the fence and tearing it down and stealing it. I'm more worried about safety.
Right, sure.
I mean, so, in my, in other words, I don't care if they wish to put a 6-foot fence up or if they wish to shrink it to the minimum desired effect for themselves. If they want to put a fence up to hide and cover it, I'm okay with that.
Sure.
Anything else? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve as presented with the exception that I do not mind if they change the fence administratively if it makes more sense for them, along with the recommendation of some town staff to obtain a zoning permit and fee payment as necessary.
So, a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call for a question, please. Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Cutler?
Yes.
Dr. Bevan?
Epstein.
Dr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Yoko?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes.
Okay. Item number eight, discussion item about the land use matrix. Town staff is the applicant. Ms. Clary, what say you?
Yes, so as requested at last month's meeting, you have three different copies in front of you. One copy is the redlined version with the blue inserts. The highlighted portions are the portions that we identified as being more of staff's suggested recommendations. You have a black and white copy, which would be if you accepted the blue and the redlined changes. And then you also have just a black and blue copy, which would include the blue as the new additions. Thank you.
Thank you for all that work that you've done with that.
Yes, thank you. All right, it's a discussion item, so let it rip.
Under number two on the final copy, what does upper tenant mean?
Under number two on the black and white copy?
Yes. A residential dwelling upper tenant, what's that mean?
I believe it's more of like an accessory, like a secondary. When we went through, we were focused on a consolidation of the uses so that if there was one that stood alone, we, we didn't, we didn't mess with it, we just left it. We were really focused on consolidating the uses across zoning districts.
I understand that, I just don't know that word.
Is it like a garage?
Julie, are you texting?
Yes.
I'm working on it.
An accessory, other item associated with particular activity or style of living.
So, it's, it's not the primary, so you would not be allowed to have a residential dwelling in the I-2, which is the heavy industrial, but it's possible to have that as a secondary use to that commercial or industrial building. And that's only for a watchman or caretaker.
Okay.
And this is not necessarily attached, it could be separate?
Correct.
Dr. Bevan, I'll, I'll share, I pulled up on the legal information, it's a pertinent refers to rights or restrictions that run with the land. The term is generally used in the context of easements or covenants and is distinguished from rights or restrictions and gross which only benefit or burden a particular person. Pertinent rights or restrictions in contrast are tied to a specific parcel of land and pass on to subsequent owners when the parcel is transferred. So, that may be the key point in that is transfer, an approval transfers with the property.
It carries, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Can you explain number eight to me?
Which?
On your new document?
The black and white one?
Yeah, yeah.
Or the blue one? Okay, black and white.
All nonconforming uses.
So, as we discussed last month, the I-1 and the I-2 are interesting in the fact that they have permitted uses, they have special permit uses, but they also have prohibited uses. And so, the X is a listed prohibited use in that zoning district.
So, in other words, if you had something grandfathered, you can't expand it to make it bigger?
Correct. There potentially could be a BZA exception, but I concur.
A prohibited use in here would be a slaughterhouse. But, but you're saying basically because of this, they would not be able to expand or change anything about that if we allow this, is that correct?
So, this would be existing nonconforming structures that you would not be allowed to use or expand facilities. So, if it's already there, you are grandfathered in, but if you wanted to double the size of whatever you were doing, you would not be allowed to expand that.
We're not encouraging greater nonconformance, basically.
Well, but, but in light of what's given, well, potentially what may be happening with Smithfield Foods and expanding and bringing in, you know, I, I would hope they would expand here. And so, I don't necessarily want to say you can't add on, I think if it's a special use permit, that might be different. I don't know, I don't, I don't want to tell our, one of our major benefactors, I'm sorry, you can't add on to your nonconforming business when it's a major contributor to our economy and our aesthetics and our name, but it just seems, that seems a little harsh for an animal slaughterhouse versus a ammonia and garbage incinerating plant and the other things that are in there, but I don't think we should cut our nose off despite our face on an existing industry that's already here. But unless I'm missing some point with this, but I really think we ought to take the animal slaughterhouse out of this and allow some degree of special use permit.
Right.
Or something, that would, like I said, I just want to make sure I'm not missing something. But again, maybe I don't know all of these businesses and how toxic they are to an environment, but I'm still not opposed to if somebody bought the plant and they wanted to refurbish it to make fireworks here, I don't know if that's good, bad, or indifferent, but I don't know, it just seems like a very harsh way to push this in the, in the matrix or even for the zoning, but especially for animal slaughterhouses.
Are you referring to the?
Number eight.
Industrial one? Light industrial?
Again, if I'm understanding this correctly, they can't add it all in either one or two. If it's nonconforming and the structure is already nonconforming, they can't add on. Now, I don't know if their structures are not, nonconforming or not, I don't know their setbacks, I don't know all the rules, I don't know, don't know all those things. I mean, their warehouses are awfully close to the road, but I don't know if they meet setbacks and all those things, but I think to tell them it's, sorry, it's, there's no way around this is harsh.
Should at least be able to get there with an SUP.
Yes, in my opinion.
I don't disagree with that.
I agree that SUPs appropriate.
Well, I guess permitted uses with SUP would be the same thing as nonpermitted, but we're giving them, I mean, I, like I said, I don't know what the other industrial uses there, are these really industry we do or don't want here, but that's our industrial park. Why would we try to limit how much stuff is there? But I don't, I don't know, I don't understand chlorine mixing plants and all this stuff that goes on, but I don't know, I just feel like it's awfully harsh not to have a way, a workaround.
We don't have to approve it, they can apply.
Correct.
They would also still be bound under the BZA for the extension of a nonconforming use, they could not increase more than 25%, and they would need to go to the BZA in order to get that exception. So, we will update number eight to include SUPs for light industrial and heavy industrial for the nonconforming uses in order to expand.
To me, yes, that's just my opinion.
I agree.
I agree as well.
And would that include number 14, an animal slaughterhouse?
So.
Because you have not permitted an industrial, light industrial?
Correct, it's only permitted in, in the heavy industrial by an SUP.
Is I, industrial one, is there zoning over there by those plants, or is that more farmer service and down Battery Park Road?
Or would it be the?
Form of Pinewood Heights, isn't that light industrial?
Some of Pinewood is I-2, some of Pinewood's I-1, and some of Pinewood is CI, which we are, once we get this settled, we will repeal the CI and rezone Pinewood to just the I-1. It looks as though everything north of Berry Hill Road is I-2 that fronts on North Church Street.
You look like you have something to say.
Well, there's some other comments I'd like to make about this.
Okay, what's your?
One is hotels. And 146, I guess it's 146 on the final, let me see what it is, on the final, no, it's 73. Under. That's Planned Shopping Center, commercial, right? Is that the zone? PS Taxi? That's a Planned Shopping Center?
Correct.
Is there a reason hotels should be excluded from that? It's permitted in the highway retail, and it's permitted on P MUD.
So our planned shopping centers, that is like the Kroger area, where we have like our, like our strip areas?
Strip mall, okay.
We did not think that a hotel fit in with that, especially when you have the HRC that fronts along the entrance corridor, that that would probably be a better fit for hotels than inside a strip mall.
I mean, I was thinking like maybe a hotel, an anchor, a strip mall, same as a grocery store, but... Okay. The other question I had about this was recycling, we're just looking at this, the final version here, and recycling, and I'm looking at recycling in attached residential, multifamily residential, and M H TAC.
You're looking at 114, just so everybody knows where you are?
Yes. Why would we allow recycling centers in those zones?
Right now, we currently allow them by, it's for the use of those, by those residents in that, we just combined all three of them into one that says the recycling centers is an S U P for those three zoning designations.
Are recycling centers here meaning like recycling drop-offs, or are you talking like a business who's going to
No, like a convenience center, drop-off, yeah. So the way that it read previously was recycling center for exclusive use of mobile home park residents, recycling centers for use by the A R district residents only, recycling centers for use by M F R district residents only, and so we combined those into just recycling centers, would need an S U P in those three districts.
So these are just collection centers, not a process?
Right, it's not a recycling facility.
Okay, that's what, okay.
But this also means trash collection as well, because I'm sure they're probably going to have recycling and trash side by side?
Usually.
That would be up to the developer.
A little confusing, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, as long as it's just a recollection centers, you know, these drop-off points, as I recall, there was some conditions that they had to be, there were setbacks when this was approved sometime back. Okay, all right, that answered that question.
What about number 26, the bulk storage of materials, shouldn't that be, well, what do we call it, excluded, prohibited, in all but the one that you want the S U P, which is the I-2?
So it's prohibited in I-1, and it's an S U P in I-2?
Right, but should it be prohibited everywhere else as well, or is that just, it is understood?
Like why is there not an X beside the other one?
Right, why isn't there an X all the way across?
So, again, going back to these commercial were unique because they actually spell out prohibited uses, just in the commercial, we don't do that in any other, in any other, or not commercial in the heavy industrial, we don't do prohibited uses in any other zoning designation.
Gotcha.
I believe that this would, would be for like a proposed text amendment, if they wanted to come forward with this proposed use, it would be a grounds of denial in the sense that it's already listed as a prohibited use.
Exactly, all right. Just jumped out.
Thank you.
I don't want it next door.
Yes, one other comment.
Mr. Brown.
What I was gonna say, how much is, how much is considered bulk?
More than one pound.
Well, you get into like custom collision or whatever, whenever they have their thins, their cleaners, paints, you typically have
Solvents.
You're right, all the solvents, you typically have storage, is that considered?
So that would be an accessory use to the primary use of the caliber collision facility. The bulk storage, that would be the primary use, would be that that's what they're doing on the property.
Got it.
Mr. Brown, sir?
Yes. Something that's important to the town, I'm lost about this, and I don't see it in the final version, but on the red and, the mark, the red markup, the farmer's market was scratched out, how is that being held within the final black version?
What number you're answering? Correct, that would just be retail sales, we wouldn't need to call out a farmer's market in particular for a use, it would just be, it would fall under the generic retail sales. It's 116 on the red line.
116 on your red line, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yes, that makes sense, okay. All right, thank you.
What else, ladies and gentlemen?
Number 30 on the black version.
Car washes?
I feel like it should be a special use permit across the board.
Which one was it?
Thirty.
Thirty, car washes.
On the 30.
I just don't find them to be very sightly, you look over across New Bernews, Hampton, everywhere, they pop up on every corner, I don't know if they're good moneymaker business things, but
Right.
How many of these things do we want on the corners of our streets?
Good point.
Buildings are typically rectangular shoebox structures, there's no character to them, I'm just, one or two are fine, but how many's enough? And if they're all permitted, you can't do anything about it.
Right.
Good point.
I think S U Ps for that, what about storage facilities, speaking of things on every corner?
I think if they made them out of Conex boxes, I'd be okay with that.
Any further discussion on car washes? Is everyone in agreement with Dr. Pope?
I am.
Do we have any restrictions that we're overlooking? The only issue that I foresee is that I-1, one of the permitted uses, nope, it's special use, okay. The problem that we encounter is in our industrial, a lot of it just says, any use permitted by right or special use permit in the HRC is automatically permitted here, and so I just have to watch that.
Okay.
And that's what those asterisks are, meaning that it came
Because it's permitted in the HRC.
Correct.
Okay.
Did everybody follow that? Anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
Blast furnace, I get, Boiler Works, why are we not allowing Boiler Works? Why does it, anybody have any idea why they would?
That, we did not touch that, that's what's there.
I'm just looking at it and going, I mean, that's high-tech welding, I mean, most of What's that?
Blast furnace.
Well, blast furnace, I understand, not wanting to have a blast furnace in town, you know, having, you know, come from Pittsburgh, I understand what a blast furnace in town would be like, but Boiler Works is simply, I mean, welding pressure vessels and such that I don't understand why we'd be prohibiting a manufacturing facility that could support many of the supplemental industries in the area.
So would you like to see that as an S U P in I-2?
I would, and even I-1.
And I-1, planning commission in agreement with that?
Yes.
Any other comments on the first page, 1 through 35 of the final version? All right, how about the second page?
Number 49, entertainment centers, it's only allowed in P MUD. I'm assuming entertainment centers are venues such as this, but we also approved an entertainment center at Wise's, I'm gonna call it Wise's, but the front part of that building, did we approve?
Event facility.
Is that different than an entertainment center?
Yes, 53 and 54.
53 and 54, yeah.
So an entertainment center, would you consider that, what, movies? We do have movie theater, so maybe like an arcade?
Arcade, skating rink?
I would just say it's a skating rink. So would that not, would that not be a little more encompassing throughout all of the commercial developments, whether it's permitted or special use permit, but it seems awfully restrictive of the entertainment center to be only in the P MUD.
So again, we were just consolidating, we did not go through to overhaul the entire thing, but we can certainly add it as an S U P or permitted use in HRC?
But then even if you're going to keep event facilities as accessory, 53, 54, is that, why would that not be allowed in P MUD as well, just because it's commercial space, but it looks like it's not part of P MUD, but seems like to me that should be part of P MUD, and the entertainment center should be part of everything else, maybe not residential, but at least on the commercial side, but... I don't know, it just seems they're awfully similar and very close, and we're splitting hairs here, but very restrictive on one and not as restrictive on others.
So should both of those be S U Ps?
I'm sorry.
Fifty, 53 is right now permitted in P MUD, well, we, permitted with an asterisk, what's it mean?
It's permitted because it's permitted in HRC.
Okay.
So by default, it's permitted. But you want to add event facilities as principal uses as an S U P to the P MUD for 54?
I don't see where it should be.
I don't mind if it's just an S U P.
Yeah, I think an S U P.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And then for entertainment centers, you want to add that as an S U P for P S C, H R C downtown on I-49?
I mean, for me, yes.
Yeah.
It just seems to follow along. It seems silly that we're not going to think that a movie theater or bowling alley may not want to come into a commercial district, but if that's what we're defining as an entertainment center.
So 49 will add S U P to downtown, H R C, and P S C, and then for number 54, we will add S U P to the P MUD.
Yep.
Anything else on the second page? Ready to move on? Anything on page three?
104 pharmacies, we're pretty liberal everywhere except for industrial one, why is it not, I guess it's just the nomenclature and the ordinance, but why would it not be permitted in industrial one versus everywhere else? Do you have it as a special use permit in I-1 versus it's permitted everywhere else?
Yeah. I believe it's an S U P in I-1 because I-1 defaults to an S U P for our H R C, while I-2 defaults to permitted, so it's, again, it's defaulting to back to that language.
I don't mind if you, language has to change for you to update that, whatever y'all think makes the most sense, but it just seems that, hey, why are we gonna make them jump through the hoop for that one?
So we want it to be a permitted use by right in I-1 for pharmacies, which is number 104?
I think in industrial use of pharmacy, if they thought they could use the land, would make sense, but we need more pharmacies.
Yes, yes.
This is the truth. Okay, we will update 104. Okay, everybody good with that? Anything else on this page? All right, page four, it's your pleasure.
Page four, the last page?
Yes, sir.
Maybe splitting hairs here, but how come taxidermy's called out separately than other home occupations, or is this still principal use? Does it matter if somebody's doing it out of their garage versus a storefront? But trying to figure out why taxidermy is called out a little bit separately.
It's called out in the zoning ordinance as, like in H R C, as an S U P item specifically, we did not change that. Anything else?
Yes, for me, outside of the taxidermy, going down to basically maybe 145 through 151, all the waivers, maybe some are appropriate, some are not appropriate, but what seems odd to me when I look at this is why do some zoning districts have waivers and others do not, and there's no way around it? Why do we not have a waiver across all types of zoning here? I mean, it seems silly to pick and choose that if it's P MUD, it's a newly created one, has a waiver for everything, but our old established ones have no waivers, it just seems haphazard, and why is, why are waivers not contiguous across the board? To me, every zoning district should have a waiver of what do you want to use, and why do you need to change what we're doing, but you can't even get to the starting line on some of these points, and it just seems very unfair that downtown and P MUD have everything, but other ones don't, so I don't know, it just seems odd that all this, that whole section from maybe 144, 145, all the way through 151 is not a filled-out graph for the grid, so I'm trying to figure out what all this really means, and that just seems silly that we pick and choose who can change what they want to do and who they can't. But I don't know, that seems to me to be, needs to be a standard across the board for all of the zoning districts.
So 144 to 151, S U Ps?
Yes, for me, yes, because it just seems random and haphazard. You allow parking and waiver across all zoning, but you don't allow waiver of yard requirements, I'm assuming that's setbacks for yards, but
Yes, sir.
But, you know, again, just depending on the lot size, why would you not do that in, you know, suburban residential or whatever, you allow it in downtown, never in residential, but why would a subdivision You allow it in downtown, never hit residential, but why would a subdivision not allow it if they had a lot? I don't know, it just seems like it needs to be consistent across the board to me.
Yeah, and I think making it all an SUP gives us the ability to look at it on a case-by-case basis and determine, you know, which ones work and which ones don't.
Ms. Chairwoman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
If, okay, that's seven, eight waivers. We pared down from quite a few, but basically we're saying you can do a waiver through an SUP, which is, therefore makes them synonymous, so waiver and SUP are now synonymous. And so if we make that across the board, then it really kinda nullifies our zoning, 'cause what we found, I think, from a legal perspective, is anywhere an SUP exists, we have to entertain any application through an SUP. So now what we say, basically, this is, you know, if I'm an applicant, it feels like to me, you got some rules, let's say community conservation, right, is whatever density limit, but it has an SUP, waiver SUP available for that, and therefore we now have to entertain any waiver applied for, for anywhere than such that we allow an SUP waiver. And I think that that has its appropriate uses, but I don't think it's appropriate to... Well, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I think I would urge caution to say that across the seven or eight areas, which we've consolidated from a, I don't know, a dozen or so areas, and then to say all of our zoning, residential zoning in those areas are all available for SUP, I'm not sure that that is prudent on this body, because what do we see ourselves spending most of our time doing is evaluating SUPs and dealing with SUPs. So now if we allow our entire zoning map effectively, every category of zoning to have an SUP waiver of all of these elements, and now basically we're saying we wanna evaluate every zoning decision potentially on a case-by-case basis instead of having a concrete zoning ordinance. So I would just approach this with caution as far as saying, you know, waiver of district size would be appropriate to be waived in community conservation by SUP. I don't know if that would be appropriate or not, but if, say hypothetically that we agree that it's not, well, then we have to entertain an SUP for that use, even though we determined that it would be inappropriate in that zoning area. So I would, I would just caution a little more specific approach to making waivers available across the board throughout the community without question.
I get you, but in community conservation, a special use permit is for churches and places of worship. They can't, we can't even give them a waiver to put a steeple up if it's over thirty-five feet. We have no, no way around it, am I correct? We might commonsensically say that, but our ordinance says if you don't put an SUP in there, they can't put a steeple over, they can't go above thirty-five feet. So we're blocking them, even though it says we can do it by special use permit, we're blocking them.
Well, I think that's actually, I mean, isn't that allowing, saying you by right can build a steeple up to thirty-five feet, and if you wanna go above that, you gotta get a special use permit, and that's basically saying, okay, here's some rules, follow those, and if you, if you need an exception, but to allow a waiver to our entire zoning ordinance effectively, I mean, I'm not saying that is that broad, but...
But they can't get before us if they don't allow for a waiver. We can't even look at that technically. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, hear me, but we can't even, even if a church wanted, and we were saying, yeah, we'll entertain it, I don't think legally we can do that.
So that is a specific area that we do address where they can for steeples, exceed that by special use permit. That is in the community conservation. So for that specific example, there is a workaround, but I think to what you're saying is if we don't allow the waiver, then we'll never see the application.
Correct, but also, schools are also, public schools and colleges are also permitted use in the community conservation. And I guess if they exceed thirty-five feet, is that a special use permit? Or is that, again, an issue since it's permitted, we may never see that, because now, based on the new state law, that's gonna be gone, I mean, they're gonna prove it without us even seeing it administratively, correct?
Correct.
So I think, again, I've said this for the twelve years I've been on the commission, every special use permit gives us the right and the legal authority to intervene. Every special use permit we have on this document is to our protection as the town. And so the more SUPs you fill in on this grid, I think the more say and the better off we are. I know y'all don't like them, and that's what you ran, papers made it abundantly clear, that's what y'all ran on, but the more SUPs that are on this document, the more say we have.
Sure, we have more control that way.
Well, actually, I would counter that with we control through ordinance, and then we allow variations of our control through SUP. Certainly, you're right, if something is permitted by right, we are ceding control of that to the applicant. So that, that doesn't really, isn't impacted so much by SUP. But when we have an ordinance, and just say the density value as an example, 'cause we've seen SUPs for that on multiple occasions, it effectively, between our history of how we've approved SUPs and the availability and our forced nature in which we have to entertain them if they're applied for, is the way I understand it from our, from the attorney, that we place ourselves in a position to, yes, have to evaluate everything, but we cede control because now we have to entertain that. We have to justify why we don't want this in our community, whereas if we exclude it in our ordinance right off, we don't have to justify why we exclude it. If developer shows up and says, I wanna build, it's zone for ten, it's SUP, and I wanna put in, or it's zone for five, it's SUP, and I wanna put in ten, and now we have to make a justification of why that's not allowed and deny that application or approve it, instead of having an ordinance that stands on its own.
So the ordinance is, though, make it all black and white, and either you go one way or the other. It doesn't, that's not appealing to me in the type of work that we're trying to do. Because I think that if you have something that is not stated that it's allowed, we lose out on some possible good things that could be applicable. And we'd be the loser, the town would be the loser.
Hence why I said I think more consideration should be given to this and think of more specifically and intently on where SUP should be allowed. I'm not saying that SUP shouldn't be allowed, but I'm saying that if you broadly say everything in our zoning ordinance is wavable, now we have to entertain every application regardless, and there is no longer any black and white to our zoning ordinance. So, again, I'm not saying not to allow them, but I'm saying intentional thought should be placed in where we allow waivers to occur, because otherwise, everything is now effectively a case-by-case basis, if an applicant chooses for it to be. And it puts the power, puts the power completely in the applicant. They can throw anything at the wall that they want, which in some cases is great, but, I mean, much like, I mean, in that case, for your, what was it, Boiler Works, you know, you wanna put SUP in there, why was it, why are there Xs in anything, right? We don't know what technology could come in the future, right? We have the capability to change all this at any, at any point with town council, but why would we exclude anything, like any of these Xs, why would they even be on there? Why wouldn't we put SUP on here? We could have a place, propose a blast furnace that's a new technology, small, quiet, energy efficient, low pollution, would be a great idea, but we're excluding it. So why are we having some exclusions, but then we wanna give a broad, across-the-board waiver on other things? It just doesn't really, those, those things are kinda conflicting to me.
I agree with you, I think we should change a lot of those Xs to SUPs, because you're right. It encourages creativity, brings people with new ideas, different things, but we can't let them in the door, we can't see it. And that's sort of the point, but even like on the waiver building, like your planned shopping center use is still thirty-five feet, but yet we don't allow them to exceed it. So their ordinance is thirty-five feet, you know, that one's specifically excluded out of there, but I don't know. To me, they're all one and the same to me, but when you look at all these zoning districts, they, just because they bring it, we don't have to approve it. But what are they asking for? Does it make sense in what they're asking for in this, that, and the other? We can go back to Mr. Luter's project at Pierceville. Did it make sense to put four-story apartment buildings or three? Pretty adamant that I didn't wanna see four, but three stories are appropriate, you know, but he wanted a roof, or at least not a flat roof, but a A-frame roof, and that would certainly keep with the architectural style. But, you know, that would happen to be zone P-mud, but if it was in a shopping center district, he wouldn't be able to present it that to say, does it even seem reasonable? I don't know, I just think it needs to be across the board, it just, it doesn't make any sense. We allow some to do it and some not to, you know, within our own ordinance. Our ordinance needs to be consistent and fair.
Other thoughts?
I would just, consistency on that would be for every one of these blanks to say SUP. Every one of these Xs to say SUP. That's what consistency on that would be, not just in waivers, on all hundred-and-fifty-three line items. It would say SUP across the board, and we would entertain anything that comes into our community. So I think if that's an approach we wanna take, then certainly blast furnaces and taxidermy is gonna be permitted either by right or by SUP in every region of our, of our community. So I just think that's, I think that would...
Let me rephrase my question, any new comments from anyone else?
Well, actually, I understand, I understand what Councilman Cutler is referring to. I mean, it would become rather tedious to do all this work, all these zones, if they have special use permits. Everything would be questioned, everything would be questioned, and it would be, it would be dismissive of all the ordinances just to put SUPs all the way across. I mean, it might keep it convenient to give opportunity to people, but I think it would be rather tedious to make SUPs all the way across.
But don't you wanna have that control, Charles?
You do have the control with the ones that's here. You have control with that, but you lose total control over everything if you just fill it in with SUPs.
You don't, because you don't have to approve them.
But, but you, you have to disapprove them. You're giving them the opportunity, so you still have the work to disapprove them.
I'm not ready to do the work.
But we've done that multiple times, where they've had seven SUPs, and we say, let's take them individually, do number one first, number two, number three, and we approve for five, and then I do, and things like that.
And that's work.
Yeah.
You're increasing your work.
That's what we're here for.
But that's what we're here for.
You increase...
It's, yeah.
Why we took the job, why?
But why, there's some, there really are some zones that really don't need it. It really doesn't.
Well, and, and yes, there are zones that don't need an SUP, because it is completely out of the realm of possibility that something specific would go there, something that the developer or an individual wanted to bring there. That's, that's not practical. So your idea of going just SUP across the board is not practical, I don't believe. But having them in certain places are. But let me ask you, Ms. Cleary, what is a blank space? What does that indicate? If there's nothing in the, in the box?
Then it's not a listed use as a permitted use or an SUP.
Okay, but they could still ask for it and have it disapproved?
No, so for example, here, like salvage yards? That would be an SUP, sorry, number one thirty-two. That'd be an SUP in the light industrial and the heavy industrial. And not permitted anywhere else, correct?
Not permitted anywhere else, okay. So blank is not permitted.
Correct.
So I agree with things like that, it shouldn't be across the board, I agree. But when you're talking about waivers, that affects all zoning districts. That's, that's very different than a permitted use or a car wash or a animal slaughterhouse or whatever.
I just wanted to add that.
I have a new comment, Chairwoman Hillgas.
Do tell.
We do also have an avenue to deal with outside-the-box things. I mean, the planning commission, the town council, you know, given a, given a waiver capability to, you know, across the board, everything, we already really have that. The town council, the planning commission, town council on the recommendation of the planning commission or on their own can change the text of the, of anything in the zoning that they choose. So if something novel, truly novel came in, that was way outside of, you know, way out to lunch on what's permitted, we have the ability to make those changes as a governing body, so, you know, the, but to allow to throw spaghetti on the wall and see if it sticks, I think that's, we are here to do the work, but we're not, we don't wanna create a system where everything that happens in the town is potential work.
Well, we sort of did that with our sign ordinances. We, I think we basically review every non-conforming sign, period, right? So if it exceeds thirty-two square feet, we get it. If I'm correct on my facts there, but we basically did that to ourselves a couple of years ago because we wanted to see what people were trying to put up. And so we did do that to ourselves.
I will say, we might not get that novel idea, because when the developers come to look at the zoning ordinance and they see that they can't, they might not even contact us about a proposed project.
Yeah.
Totally possible, totally possible. But what we see now is precedent in our current zoning allowing every applicant, applicant that comes in requesting a deviation from our SUP, from our zoning, and none of it really seems to be novel. I mean, the promontory is a beautiful property, it's gonna be a beautiful development, but nothing was novel about that if our, you know, except that they wanted to build more houses than our zoning ordinance wanted them to build. And that's pretty much consistent with the other developments that have been built and then, or being built and approved and ones being considered, that, I mean, you can't deny that every, pretty much every one of them at least starts with an SUP request. So if every, it seems illogical that we would create a system that every request starts with a waiver, instead of every request conforms, you know, or some requests conform. I think it's, and it's most exacerbated in our large developments.
I agree. I don't think I have a single developer who's not gonna stick six pounds of flour in a five-pound bag. Every developer's gonna push the limit, every developer's gonna ask for more, and it's our job to figure out, what are they asking for? What do we wanna see? And what can we concede? What can they concede? And what do you negotiate down? And that's exactly what happened at Mallory Point. There's a lot of give and take, especially over the environmental issues and what's the creek back there? Morris Creek, what is it named, whatever, but...
I think it's Morris.
Moon Creek and all of that, and they really conceded and increased their, their RPAs. They didn't allow boats on there. So, you know, we did a lot of negotiation on that, and that was very appropriate for the environmental constraints, because we wanted that, the citizens wanted that, and then he was willing to concede in other areas for that. And so that was the whole give and take, but every developer's gonna put six pounds in a five-pound bag, and every developer's gonna ask the maximum for their house, irregardless of what is appropriate workforce housing or whatever the key term is for affordable housing and this, that, and the other. But, you know, every person's gonna sell what they have at the maximum price, they're gonna sell it.
That's the reason for doing business, is maximizing.
And so I don't care about that, but I'm willing to negotiate what they want, what we want, what we think's appropriate, and it always works out better in the negotiation if there's give and take on both sides. Everybody feels like they win.
I don't wanna mix apples and oranges here, and I can see a development as large as Mallory Point asking for several SUPs. That's reasonable, that's a very large development, but if you put SUPs all across... But if you put SUPs all across the smallest application, the smallest lot, the smallest project that come before us, it's going to ask, have SUPs, every little thing, every little thing. Is that going to start with a waiver request, SUP, every little thing? And that's, that's unnecessary, that's unnecessary work, that's unnecessary consideration. I mean, there should be some limitations on what come before us, and it will not be any limitations if you just run SUPs all across. And with that being said, looking at it, there are only two, two locations here, I would add it, SUP. On 151, waiver yard requirements, there's SUPs in quite a few of these, I don't know why multifamily residential was excluded, and I don't know why retail office was excluded. But to put SUPs in all of these, I think that's a, yeah, that's not the direction we want to go in.
Well, this was a discussion item, and we have discussed it. Ms. Clary, what's the, how do we move forward?
Well, if there's not consistent guidance on 144 to 151, we'll just save it for next time, and we can make the other changes.
Okay, and then we would vote on it next time?
Uh, no, we?
Vote on recommendation?
What, yes, eventually, what we'd like to do is then redline the uses so that you see that in each zoning district, but that will take some time going through it.
Okay.
So, that will come back for discussion prior to advertising for a public hearing.
Okay.
For a recommendation to council.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, great, thank you very much. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have a?
Let me ask that question, do we want to do the straight consolidation as an item and then changes to it afterwards, or do we want to try to do changes and consolidation all at the same time?
We have kind of mixed them in together at this point, so we're going to do them, we're just going to present it as one entire package.
Okay, thank you. We have several meeting minutes to approve, first one is September 9th. Is there a motion?
Well, Chairwoman Hilligas?
Yes, sir.
I have a correction, September 9th.
Okay.
Uh, the minutes, well, I don't know about tonight, but there is a comment on September 9th, and it's where, let me do a search, water flow. It was attributed to me, it concerned the parking lot at Kroger, that station, proposed station.
What page you answered?
It was 41, when I was looking at it at home, you know, page 41.
The agenda item for, on this that we're looking at for Kroger is?
Yes, I found it, yeah, yeah.
Looks like it's 39.
Yeah, on 41, there's a statement there that says, I said, that I felt it would be a good idea to add a curb to that area in order to maintain the water flow. Well, it's not water flow, it's traffic flow, there was no water involved here, that should be traffic flow. That correction can be made. Other than that, I have no other comments.
Okay, anything else?
Make a motion, we approve the September 9th minutes with the correction by Mr. Brian as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, can we do this unanimously? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Was that opposed?
That's as much of a vote as I can get. Chairwoman Hilligas, a question. We don't have legal representation, or is that on screen somewhere?
I was getting ready to ask.
We're not going to have that continuously like we used to because of the change in our attorney.
So, you're keeping the minutes, who's keeping the minutes?
Staff reviews the minutes and revises them and then presents them to county, to planning commission.
Oh, okay.
That is, that is how it's always been done.
They're recorded, yeah, and the town clerk prepares them up, that's correct, right?
All right, thank you.
Mr. Brian, on that, the attorney, legal services are always available if the chairwoman or the planning director deems that the attorney should be at a meeting, they are available, whether they be in attendance electronic or in person. But similar to like we had the special meeting and the gentleman drove all the way down from Richmond and we, the cost that that was, and, you know, looking at the agenda, it probably wasn't necessary. So, I think until, we do have an RFP that will be, come out in the future for permanent legal counsel, and that may shift around after that occurs, but while we're in this transition period, I would say that they're available as needed.
Do you know when that RFP is?
I'm, sorry, what?
Do you know when the RFP hits the street?
It's on committees for council for review.
Yeah, yeah, it's coming up for review.
Okay, thanks. All right, next is the approval of the September 23rd special meeting minutes. Anything that needs correcting there? Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Y'all gonna make this side of the room do everything tonight to go on it. Any further discussion? There's been a motion and a second. All in favor approving the minutes of the September 23rd special meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved, just submitted. Okay, approval of the October 14th meeting minutes, any corrections or anything with those?
The only correction I have on there is just to make sure that the document states that we did not have legal counsel at that meeting, and we don't have it tonight as well, just in case there's record-keeping issues of who's present and who isn't present.
It is notated on staff that is present, there is no legal counsel listed.
Okay, I don't know if that needs to be a line item saying not present, because there are some in here, members absent. Is that members, because we're members and they're not, they normally are here?
Right.
We just don't need bickering back and forth, who was present at the meeting and who wasn't present at the meeting, and who's getting paid and who's not getting paid. Just like the record to reflect that the council is not at the meeting, so 10 years from now, we, we know.
Is there a motion to approve with that addition?
I move that we approve that, those items.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? Been a motion and a second to approve the October 14th meeting minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. Anything else for the good of the cause, ladies and gentlemen? Thank you for your time and attention.